Will the Wisconsin School District Board of Directors please come to order? Faircosh, please conduct a roll call of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank? Ms. Greenstein? Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff? Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Seven present, two absent. Juden Board Representative, Joel B. Ordeman.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America, public, hands, one nation, God, peace and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 26th, 2018 Public Works Section, West Session of the Wisconsin School District Board of Directors. And I'd also like to note that prior to this meeting, the board met executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. Next on our agenda is the prior meetings. Over the past month, particularly have a little call out to item two E, our Curriculum, Technology and Facilities/Transportation session we had in November 19th. It was a pretty content-filled session that we're going to have a more detailed update on later in the session. With that, item three is our upcoming meetings. And the one to note is that next week, we're going to be having, in addition to the regular public board meeting where we vote on the items discussed today, we're also going to have a reorganization, which we do annually, to Chairman of President and Vice President. Next up is presentations, and we don't have any standalone presentations. This section, although we have a few presentations that will come up later in our agenda. Next is a public comment, or public comment on agenda items. I don't see any speakers. We'll move on to the report of the board president. I have one informational item to us. It's regarding, it says board representatives at reorganization. As I mentioned earlier, typically at the board reorganization meeting, which we hold annually, the primary purpose is to pick the president and vice president for the year. But at the upcoming meeting, we also need to formally confirm the appointment of our board representative to the North Monco Technical Career Center. Ronnie Hayman has been our representative. Her term is expiring, and so in advance of their next November 17th, going to, I think, take action, appoint Ronnie or find a Monco Technical, is that correct? Any questions about that? All right, moving on to the report of the superintendent. Tim?
Thank you. I have no informational items tonight, and I also have no voting items that will be acted on at the next meeting.
Okay. Report of the Assistant Superintendent, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. I did want to share that last spring, we asked for the board to support the purchase of our new data management system, which is called Linkit. It is a replacement for a system we had in the past that was not quite as robust as this one is. And I just wanted to share with you that on November 6th, at our professional development day here with the faculty, through team leaders who had been trained initially, they were able to turnkey that training with all of our district faculty. And that was a very successful day, and our teachers were introduced to the tool and the way it can generate certain kinds of reports to make their use of data more successful in differentiating instruction for students. I just wanted to let you know how well that was received. Our teacher facilitators who came for training and then did that training on that day and supported our rest of our faculty did a really fine job, and they too were well-received in terms of their delivery of that. I just wanted to let you know that something you voted to approve is now introduced, and we will continue to have ongoing training throughout the year to expand the use, including sessions at each of the buildings to kind of make it more personalized and help support our teachers in the use of the tool. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary. The report of the solicitor, Jeff?
I have no report, and I have no items to address for the agenda.
For the board secretary, Wade?
We have work session, public board meeting minutes, and the regular public board meeting minutes to approve under the board secretary report.
Okay. The report of the board treasurer?
We will be presenting the acceptance and admitting of the treasurer's report for October 31st.
Moving on to board committee reports. patients, Ronnie?
I have no board voting items.
Okay. And Curriculum and Technology, Ron's absence. Gary, can you cover the items here?
Yes, thank you again. This evening, this time of year, we do an explanation of the addition to our program of studies at the high school. This is an opportunity for us to share with you new courses that will be offered and sort of highlight them before the students have an opportunity in January to do their course selection process. So this evening, invite Jen Schmidt, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mr. Andrew Jeski, our Associate Principal of the high school, to share that information with you.
Good evening. So tonight, Mr. Andrew Jeski and I will be providing you just with an update to our program of studies, a brief update. The first series of updates are related to outcomes from the various curriculum review processes. So the first update that we have is the next course in the sequence for the AP Capstone Program. So this year, we offer the AP Seminar course, so students who have successfully completed the AP Seminar course can then take the AP Research course for next year. Our Business Education Program is currently in stage two of curriculum review. We're in the process of making revisions to all the different courses within the program, but in particular, we are making significant changes to a Business and Management course and a Computer Applications course. The Retail Management and School Store course will no longer be offered, and that course has not run in the last several years, but students who were involved in the school store were able to do that on their own time during different points of the day. And the Computer Applications is actually replacing a Computer Functions course. Family Consumer Science, we are also in the midst of curriculum review in stage two, so we will be adding a Creative Design course, which will venture into interior design and also some fashion design, so it'll hit on both of those areas. In Mathematics, we're in the process of revising our senior math course. The course has been in place for a number of years, and it's looked a little bit differently each year. So our focus for that particular course is to try to integrate mathematical applications, STEM applications, and utilize our FabLab as part of that programming. And then in Science and Technology Education, as part of the phase in of those different programs, we are adding courses. So in Science, one of the overwhelming areas that students were interested in was in Medical Science, so we're going to be adding our first course of Principles of Biomedical Science. And then in the Technology Education, we're adding the next sequence of courses, which is the Computer Integrated Manufacturing. So that will get into some of the robotics and manufacturing features of TechEd. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Andrew Jeski.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you for having me tonight. Some of the other parts of the program of studies concern just a lot of information that we provide to students and parents. Some of the changes you can see on the slide. The first one is we, in order to build a better master schedule that's more efficient, we are going to try to move up some course selection dates. So the major deadline for parents used to be in April, and now it's going to be for March. Of course, we will do changes after that, but we want to have most of the changes by then, so we can again plan better for over the summer. We did put something in the program of studies about AP exams in terms of whether or not the district and the school will have any fee requirements for students to take those AP exams. Our graduation project is going to change to emphasize more career and college readiness endeavors. That's kind of mirrored in the state. And then I'm sure you're well aware, in October, the legislature passed a new law concerning Keystone exams, so we included that information as well. Again, as you're aware, students have a lot more avenues to demonstrate proficiency than they had in the past. So that's going to make us change a bunch of things as well. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Jen, you mentioned the AP Capstone course.
Sure.
I don't know that much about it, but I heard it's like a two-year sequence. Is that right?
If the students complete both courses, it is a two-year sequence. Students can take the first course only, the AP Seminar course. The nice thing about the AP Capstone program is within both of those courses, students have an opportunity to research areas of interest, as opposed to taking an AP course that's obviously focused on a particular content area. So we had applied to College Board last year, and they approved our application, so we were able to offer the program.
Do you take AP Research if you didn't take AP Seminar?
No. The AP Seminar is required.
Right, so it is kind of like a two-year sequence if you...
Right.
How many students took AP Seminar this year?
We have, I know we have two sections. How many? Thirty students? We have thirty students.
That's a pretty good... What's that? Yeah. Yeah, a little bit I heard about it. It sounds pretty interesting, but the fact that it's a two-year commitment, and it seemed like a pretty difficult course too, potentially. I was just curious to see how many students would actually challenge. Glad to hear that thirty people actually took the seminar. That's those students pressing their two, which is AP.
And I believe there's an AP Capstone, like a diploma or some certificate that they can earn?
A designation you get on your diploma, yeah.
If they do the two classes, and then on top of that, if they complete four other AP courses and successfully pass those exams, they earn an AP Capstone diploma, which is another honorary distinction.
Yep. Great. And a question about senior math. I never heard of senior math. I thought math at high school was like geometry or calculus or something else. What's senior?
Senior math has, it's a course that was put into place for seniors who were maybe not interested in taking the higher-level math courses, the pre-calculus, the calculus or what have you, but they were still in need of a math credit. So the topics that have been covered in that course have ranged from discrete mathematics to Algebra III-type concepts to more applied math concepts. So, like I said, it's a course that's been in place for a long, long, long time. It hasn't been touched in a long time. So we wanted to make sure that we took a look at it and made sure that it was something that was relevant to students. It wasn't just a place for students to go. So we really want to focus on, like I said, application math, so doing some STEM work. There's interest in embedding some financial literacy within that course. And then I believe that students who are taking that course will have the option to take the placement test for the Montgomery County Community College if they would like to, in order to possibly not have to go through any remedial courses if they are going to Monco.
You mentioned financial literacy. When you started describing senior math, the content that could be in that course, I immediately thought about the applications of math for personal finance. It's a topic that's up at the board table for discussion, I think, over the last several years, about how can we... That, or like practical use of math in everyday personal finance for our kids, but having, figuring out where do we inject that content and what we crowd out? This course seems like a spot to put that content in, if you're going to look to amp out instruction.
Sure. I mean, that's a conversation that we've been having with all of our teachers across departments, though as we've been going through curriculum review, we're trying to find places, practical places, to embed the financial literacy. So FCS, for example, you know, we have a couple of cooking and nutrition courses, so as part of the coursework, we want to make sure that we embed some budgeting information and personal finance skills within those courses as well. We still have our personal finance course in our business education. We're fine-tuning that to try to make it more relevant and bring it up to speed. And there's one other spot where we had talked about doing it as well, and it's escaping me, but, so we're trying to infuse those skills.
Yeah.
The IE was in addition, that the work that was being done with the 11th graders, that was in addition to that.
I'd like to call, or at least highlight, the one piece towards the bottom there on AP exams. And you may recall that at the budget season last year, we tossed around the, or we asked the question, how much does it cost the district to pay for everybody's AP exam? And there was some thought that maybe that could be an area of cost-saving. And we ended up not making any changes. It was too late that last year, and we'd kick it to this year. If there's going to be any changes, unfortunately, the need to make that decision doesn't jive well with the budget cycle, because we need to get the information in the course of studies, or program of studies, and students need to know whether or not they're going to pay or have to pay for this exam, and whether or not it's going to be required. It's very difficult to require an exam for the district to do. It's not impossible, it's difficult, and then also say, we're not going to pay for it. And it's been historically, or at least the last, I don't know, years or a number of years, the district has just paid for it. And the good news is, that takes away any financial consideration from a student's academic choices in terms of having to put that bill at the end of the year. And the faculty feels very strongly that it maintains the integrity of the AP courses, because all the students, as they go through the year, know that there will be the exam at the end. And it's strongly recommended that we keep doing it, but I totally get it, that it's a, we're in the season of budget trade-offs, and so, and we need to try to have that conversation.
Tim, I think however soon we need to have it, have it. But for us as a board to make a good decision about whether to keep the policy, to change it, or eliminate it, we need to be armed with good data and information. My recollection off the top of my head, question we had last year, part of the concern was that there are several of our students who take several AP classes during the course of their career, they could take six, seven or AP courses, and the district pays for all of those. And concern was is that it's not the low-income... Concern about financial, not actually like hitting it. Could there be some other approach? Or eliminating... That was some of the back and forth we had. Got pressed for time, and issue was to make a change that when we were discussing it, unfair to the students who are already in process. So we sort of punted. But I would hate for us to kind of fall into the same traffic.
And I think one of the other things we, that we were talking about was putting a limit on how many AP classes we would pay for one student as an option. Like you said, you know, we have some kids who take AP classes or whatever the number is, and we're paying for all of those tests. And we have other students that maybe take one or two, so it's kind of not fair to just arbitrarily say, we're not paying for any AP classes. That'll be detrimental to students themselves, but maybe we don't pay our AP tests.
Yeah, and clearly, there's a lot to consider and a lot of different options, pros and cons. But again, I think the sooner we start that process, that we could fit in whatever timeline is needed to make a termination that fits with the rest of the process.
I like it. Let's, this is a work session, and we discussed it tonight. We'll bring it, have a meeting again on Monday. Won't take us very long to compile all that.
Great. Okay.
I had another question about the graduation project change. That's been mostly, I understand, a community service-based focus. Are we moving away from that, or just expanding the possibilities?
Expanding the possibilities and to try to provide students with some clearer paths to like work experience and not just relying on the community service. And yeah, then the other part was the stardom earlier in the junior year, so we could build those relationships with, you know, local folks that would take in an internship, for instance.
Are there questions, comments? All right. Thanks, Tom. Jen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Gary? Voting items?
That's it. There are no voting items.
No voting items, okay. All right, moving on to Facilities and Transportation. Tracy?
Yes, thank you. So we have a couple informational items. We had a November 19th Curriculum, Technology and Facilities/Transportation Combined Committee Meeting. There was a lot of discussion. There were many parents that came out to the meeting. We, I'll just give a brief summary. We talked about some class size guidelines, some of the ways that we were showing class sizes were not really reflecting how it is actually done. So we were talking about making changes to have those class size guidelines, sure of, you know, how we do it in the district. One of the other things that we talked about was the elementary building capacities. We got some information on that, and I think we were waiting to get some more information on talking about the function capacity, as well as band-aided, or the capacities that come from the state and what we were looking at. We talked about the 2019 enrollment projections. We had a couple of projections, I think three, and we're waiting for one more to come in. So there'll be some more talk about that. We are going to have multiple upcoming meetings, January through May, to discuss all of these items in a larger forum with more involvement. Our main objective here is to be as transparent as we can with all of these items. Joe, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, the gist of this meeting is in essence that, you know that past year, Stony Creek community has been complaining a lot about since that there were overcapacity and overcrowded. Part of this exercise was to not look at the current and projected enrollment of Stony Creek, but also projected enrollment across the district. And in that exercise, do three enrollment projections under different, three different models. Basically, the models had different assumptions. But regardless of the three models that we looked at, one more conservative and one maybe a little bit more aggressive, in all models, the district is going to be growing and growing potentially significantly by hundreds of students over the next five to 10 years. So the capacity situation at Stony Creek isn't just at Stony Creek, it's across the entire district. And with those enrollment projections combined, get a better understanding about what the capacity of each of our school buildings is, so we can overlay that, how much undercapacity or was more likely overcapacity we are now, how much overcapacity we're expected to be. The capacity figures that Breslin brought forward for us to discuss during the meeting turned out, they were more like kind of theoretical maximum capacity, that if you jammed all maximum number of students in each of the classrooms, that's how many kids you could stick in there. That's not really helpful for what we need. What we needed, something that was more of a realistic or pragmatic functional capacity of the buildings. How many students can you put in there, given restrictions on like cafeteria sizes and playgrounds and restrooms and all that stuff, and still feel like you have a well-functioning? So they're going to be coming back to us hopefully soon with functional capacity. And then we can find with enrollment and projected, how overcapacity we're... Because based on that, we're expecting that going to show that we're, we don't have enough seats, basically. You have two basic options that we'll need to consider as a board. One is redistricting, redrawing the attendance boundaries of our schools to redistribute the students in the buildings, if there's like space across and just rebalancing would work. But if not, then we need to think of something that's more costly, like potentially adding addition to a building or building a whole new building. These are big decisions. These are big decisions, and will have long-range impacts, and part of what we need is more information to fully bet our options. What we want to do, as Tracy said, is do it as much as possible in the public, in the open, share as much information as possible with the school community, especially parents and families that could potentially be affected by whatever... So that when we do, trigger on something, come as a surprise. So there's a whole series of meetings that we're planning on conducting, starting in January, rest of the school year. More information to come.
And I just wanted to clarify, one of the questions that was brought up in the meeting, when we talk about redistrict, one of the parents was worried, does that mean that their child would then not be in the Wisconsin School District? No. Every child that's here would remain in the Wisconsin School District. They might just be moved from one elementary, would remain in the Wisconsin.
Right.
Okay. And then the next item is the Middle School Performing Arts Center concept. Do we know, are you talking about that?
Yep. Thank you. And Jerry is going to walk us through a few slides. So the Middle School Performance, Performing Arts Center concept is a discussion about essentially what to do with the pool, and can we enhance the vacated middle school pool for an educational purpose? Our options are essentially to, option one is leave the space where it is right now. So if you were to go into the pool, the old middle school pool right now, there's a fence that was created directly across the, from side to side, preventing anybody from going into the pool area, and hopefully, nobody will ever hurt themselves in that vacated pool. You have the ability to walk in the door, walk across and walk out on the other side, but that's where it is right now. There is no ability to get into it unless you have a key, so it's fine. It's just it's not providing any educational benefit and long range. It's not really viable to continue doing that, but that is the status of it right now. The second option is demolition. We would have the ability to demolish the old pool. It isn't going to be inexpensive. It would probably be about $1.1 million to demolish the walls. And then also, in demolishing it, we would have to re, essentially make better the exterior wall of the remaining building. So the pool joins to the locker rooms and various other spaces. We'd have to make that more attractive, plus the demolition costs. In describing the old pool, one thing that probably increases the cost of the demolition and also helps in understanding the pool itself is, this isn't like a backyard pool where it's basically dirt and you pour concrete, and you know, that's a nice supported facility. Our pool pretty much is concrete with space underneath it where all the piping goes, the filtration system and everything else. So underneath our shell is essentially air, except from the, you know, the lowest parts of the pool, which is dirt as well. Another option is, and we received bids on this, is to try to go back to a full auditorium. The bids came in much higher than we had anticipated. For approximately $9 million, there is an option for a full auditorium. At that point in time, the administrative recommendation was not to proceed with that. It was above our estimates at that point in time, and in discussions with the architect, we did not believe that rebidding it would bring the costs down. Truthfully, what we're finding is, and even with the fourth option, generally, costs are substantially more expensive than they were, you know, several years ago, and we do not think that there is a $6 million option for an auditorium, you know, of increased capacity for the middle school. And then the fourth option that we're going to be discussing tonight is more expensive than what we had hoped. So in the bad news area, this is going to be probably in the $4 million range. Maybe it can be figured out to be a $3 million option, and frankly, we're not sure, because one of the things that we're asking for tonight is to hire professionals to investigate this in order to determine exactly what the project might cost. But essentially, this would be a viable educational space. The middle school principal basically looked through all the, she originally, Principal Bauer had created three pages worth of educational advantages to a full auditorium, and Performing Arts Center, as Jerry's going to walk through it, provides many, many of those same option advantages, just with the reduced capacity. Basically, there won't be as much seating in this Performing Arts Center. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry. We're in a work session, so we're going to hopefully walk through some of the questions that the board has. We're not going to be able to answer all of them, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Jerry.
Hey, Jerry, before you get started, Paul is relatively new to the board, and so take a step further back and to provide a little bit more context. So Paul, before you got on the board, obviously, and with the, we had a project to build a new pool at the high school. With the building of the new pool at the high school, we shut down the old, the room was basically, that area was basically boarded up. So it's not in, there was a thought, I think it was informal, but... So it's not in, there was a thought, I think it was informal, but we, but we had never budgeted at the time that the pool was being built. But there was a thought that wouldn't let the middle school pool just lie dormant, that we would actually do something. And there was talk about adding an auditorium to the middle school, doesn't have enough. So after the pool was built, we started looking at bids, as Wade mentioned, to actually go forward with the auditorium. But the bids came out dramatically higher than we expected. Our capital plan, which sort of charts out capital investments over the next four or five years. There is actually like a plug item in there for the middle school auditorium project that was about 6.5 million dollars. Thought was going to be in that neighborhood, back at closer to 10. At the time, when we were all here, we sort of thought that that was like just way too expensive. So put a hold on that. But I think many of us felt that, that portion of the building, just sitting there boarded up, not benefiting students, wasn't really acceptable. Try to come up with an alternative. So in essence, I think what Wade and Jerry are going to talk to us of alternative plan, that the administration has up. That is a more reasonable cost and closer to. Auditorium.
Thank you for providing that background.
So, I mean, given the fact that some of this is new to you, feel free to like ask questions or clarify.
I mean, I'm assuming that reinstating it to its original use as a pool was considered and deemed not reasonable or not necessary?
So there's two ways to answer that, meaning one was, there was an original study of the middle school pool and determining whether or not we could fix the middle school pool. That led to the creation of a high school pool. A second way of answering it is, do we need two pools? And the answer is no, educationally, we do not need two pools.
Thank you. Good evening. So I have a few slides this evening. First slide was a memo from Robin to me, basically just outlining how the performing arts spaces would be utilized. So I'll briefly go through that email. It's basically a performing arts space, often referred to as experimental theaters or black box theaters. It's a simple space adorned with performance space, usually large square rectangular rooms, which is exactly what we have over there now. And they're very flexible. You could put a stage in the middle, a stage on the end. The base, the room is basically empty and you can set it up for whichever performance or activity you want to put. It kind of promotes a more pure theater. And speaking with some of the drama and music people, it's kind of gives you that smaller. A circular kind of feeling where you're surrounded by all your peers or an audience and kind of gives you a different feeling. There's a variety of other groups that also can use it, music, dance, drama, of course, a very flexible space. So really to emphasize the use and more than just being able to have drama and music take full advantage of it. I was in, part of what Wade had explained earlier, Mrs. Bauer's comments about team building, project-based learning. And when we get to the photos, just kind of have that thought in your head as you're looking at them. Breakout groups, spelling bees, element bees, geography bees, gifted presentations, large group instruction. And assemblies and speakers, speakers coming in, going to speak to a team level meeting and. Able to have a, an area right now that they don't have at the building. So moving on. Basically photographed examples of experimental theaters. Theater on the left is basically a four-sided theater. Theater on the right could also be a four-sided theater. Just kind of gives you different options of how it will be laid out. Seating can be moved around, it's all basically on carts, on wheels. If you look up at the ceilings, it's different types of lighting packages that can all be moved to whichever type of setup you need. They of course be lowered down, adjusted and put back up there again. Again, actually, the photo on the left really kind of gives you that longer narrowed look. That's kind of the way the space is now. And theater to the right also just plain, it's a very plain black box theater. It gives you that ability to, you know, turn to one location, have a setting on the wall, a drop-down. Screen so you could do any type of performances or just have a speaker giving a presentation and have things up on a screen.
So a couple of the. Concepts that are going to be in most of the black box theaters, experimental theaters or performing arts centers or whatever. Are going to be lighting that is going to be hung from some type of a ceiling. And that's one of the reasons that we need to, if the board is at all interested in this concept. We need, as part of this approval, we will be hiring a structural or mechanical engineer to determine that the trusses. At the top of the old pool area would be able to support the lighting system that would be hanging. As Jerry also sort of mentioned, the walls are basically the walls, which is why it might really lay itself out well for the old pool shell. Don't have to do an incredible amount of work on the walls. Obviously, the floor is where we're going to have to spend a lot of money. But in all those concepts, what you see is pretty much a flat floor. And then the seating is, as Jerry also mentioned, very, very movable and or expandable and or removable. So that's one of the advantages of this performing arts center.
And comment that I just wanted to have on it was. For anyone that doesn't know, the middle school doesn't really have anywhere that they can have a whole grade level meet other than. I don't even know, like, I guess the cafeteria would be the only place that they could have some assembly or any kind of grade level meetings. This would be perfect for that if we could have a whole grade level in this. I think that's one of the things when we were talking about an auditorium, one of the main things. That we knew that middle school couldn't handle the whole grade level meeting together.
I think in discussion with Jerry on this one, the capacity of it would be in the area of 200.
To 250 depending on your seating.
So a grade level would be too shy of that. I mean, it would be more team oriented, this would be one or two teams who could be in attendance. So any of the activities, in fact, I think all of the activities that we listed on the initial pages can be accommodated here, just not body and size. It would be a number, you'd have to have more performances to accommodate the numbers.
So you'd have to divide the grade levels.
Yes.
Have we gotten input from the music? Like this?
Throughout the entire process, when it was an auditorium, one of the original concepts was also just using that space. And at that time, it was, it was, you know, of course, having a larger auditorium, seeing more people would be great, but in this case. You're still getting the same concept, you're still having a place right now for them to practice, to perform. To do a smaller event, a smaller drama club like Gary had mentioned. It's, it's more going to be like a 200 to 250 seating capacity, really based on how you set it up.
So the, the update to the discussion would just be to this performance arts center. I know that we spoke with Principal Bauer and we'll make sure that she has received input from the various teaching. Folks that would be able to use this asset. So I suspect it's happened, but we'll make sure.
Would anybody beside the middle school students be able to use it? Is it something that would be available for high school performances that would be appropriate for a black box?
I'm sure it could be.
Absolutely.
Outside, outside groups also, I mean, it could be. Be a great place for, even for a board meeting. Have something different.
Yeah, being that I was involved in like the performing arts when I was in middle school, we didn't really have a designated place to like perform or like play for people. Like when we performed, we'd play in the, like the big gym with like these huge bouncing, like the sound would just bounce off the walls. And like if one or two people talked in the, in the stands, it would just disrupt everything, you couldn't hear like the people playing next to you. Like for, for our dress rehearsals for band, we would have to like leave class like three periods early. Get our instruments out, walk across Houston Road over to the high school. And just perform there because we couldn't have anywhere to like rehearse because they're using the gyms for, you know, gym class. And it was just a big, like really inefficient and a big problem for, you know. I'm sure the chorus as well had the same issue, they had to go over there to do the dress rehearsal. So it'd be nice to have a designated space that, you know, you could use for music or you could use for speakers as well. Because the same issue was occurring when a speaker comes, it's just you can't hear them very well. All the shuffling and the noisy like stands was a big issue.
Potential capacity issues for the district kind of looming in the background. Have we considered this in addition to the potential uses that you're looking at? Have we considered it for educational use? Something that could potentially be needed for that and could it be a useful space for educational space?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Badger. It's, it's a great question. So the question also, I guess, is in, instead of this, would we consider making it, you know, four or five classrooms? Is that essentially what you're saying? We can certainly look at the enrollment projections and make a determination as to whether the high school prin, or middle school principal believes that. You know, this would provide the excess capacity that would be needed. With the ceiling height, it probably isn't a great option. But I think that's a viable question we can certainly ask.
Jerry, what's the ballpark estimate for what this project would cost?
Just around $4 million. And that, again, it really depends on what we find. Part of this study is exactly what we need to do. It's, the structure itself is, is not just an empty room. It's a pool. So there's a lot of different things that need to be calculated, the concrete, the span, how we're going to span the pool, what type of materials are going to be used. The ceiling itself, the roof trusses itself, can they hold the devices that we need to put up there? We believe so, but of course, we need to investigate.
Feasibility study that Bres, that Breslin's going to do will. Will that, that give us a firmer estimate of what the project will cost?
Yes, it will.
And we'll use that as a basis to do like an RFP, get general contractor or something to, on the project?
Sure. I mean, it's all, you'd have to have specifications, drawings, that would have to be finalized and then you can go out to bid.
Okay.
I think maybe just to be clear, we'd use that feasibility study to see if we continue to like the idea.
Exactly.
Sure, right, right.
Then we'd have to commission more work to be done.
Yep.
Yes.
Get to the RFPs.
Do we know roughly what the feasibility study would cost?
It's in here for $46,250 plus reimbursable expenses, not too expensive.
Jerry, does $46,200 include Breslin hiring the structural or mechanical engineer?
Yes, it does.
So Paul, that's item 15H1, that'll be up for vote next week.
Okay, is that everything or is that all the questions on that subject?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And then we have some items that will be brought up for voting next week. We just spoke about the one, which was the approval for the feasibility report for the performing arts center. We also, and I don't have the information on this, Dr. Chris Field, the acceptance of donation for a memorial bench. From parents of a Wissickin School alum.
Yes, this is a memoriam to a, it would be his alumnus, who, and the mother of the graduate and alumnus. And another alumnus will donate the bench, which will be placed outside the auditorium in memory of her son.
I think he was a, paid around, or 200, 2001 graduate and.
Oh, that's a check on that.
Children, I believe that's, yeah. His children in the district or there's grandchildren, grandchildren in the district?
Yeah, Jim, I think it'd be helpful, like when we formally vote on this next week, for us to have some more specific information about the donor and the student, I guess, that it's. Memorializing, so we could like publicly acknowledge it as part of the record.
Okay, and then the third item that we'll be voting on is the proposal for the engineering services, including. Drawings, bidding documents for the Lower Gwinnett Parking Lot Surface Renovation Project. Wait, do we need to talk about that at all? Does anybody have any questions about that? The next one is the approval for the proposal to provide design services for the middle school gymnasium locker replacement. The next item that will be on the agenda for approval would be the design services. For the Blue Bell restroom renovation project. Which I can say, since my children went to Blue Bell, that is very needed. The next item would be the approval for a feasibility study for the allowance. Of a, an athletic facility synthetic turf upgrade at the high school. And the final item is the approval for to discard and sell obsolete equipment. I just wanted to bring up about the feasibility report for the athletic turf fields. This report. Mr. Cairns is here, did you want to say a couple of words about the athletic, the turf field? Sorry, I'm veering off of the agenda right this second.
Good evening, thanks for having me out. Just very briefly about the feasibility study for the athletic turf fields. I guess three major points would be to increase activity. If we're trying to have our students have a lifelong, healthy lifestyle. This is one great way where we have a captive audience through our curricular and PE programs. Where we can get kids out on the fields and get them in that active lifestyle. From a school spirit and a community point of pride. I've seen what turf fields can do. Art, we have a beautiful turf field. Now what we're looking to do is just expand it more so we can get more kids out there, more community members out there and taking advantage of it. It gives kids a sense of pride and it gives them a want to get out there and to be active and, and on the fields. And obviously, from a competitive advantage, the more kids we get out there, from the high school to the middle school, to all of our community youth. Athletes, the, the better we're going to be. The more opportunity they have, the more repetitions they get, the better it is. Obviously, we're playing sports in the Northeast and what you see as far as climate changes and what you see in some of our local communities. That they're moving more towards going to is synthetic turf because it's a true multi-purpose field. In which we could get baseball kids on there, softball kids on there. We can put in between a baseball and softball field, we can put field hockey, soccer, lacrosse. And it just gives us so many opportunities to get our young athletes out there and get students active. Really think it would be well worth the investment because we see some local. Schools that we compete against and what they've done with their fields and their facilities. And it just really is something to be proud of.
And I guess I should have introduced, Mr. Cairns is actually our new athletic director for anyone that doesn't know. He's a member of our athletic task force. And one of the things that we were talking about with the athletic task force is. Our objective would be to, to raise, to help raise money, to help fund the turf field. But we can't really raise money for a turf field if we don't do this feasibility report to find out if it's. So that would be one of the things that we're looking at. We need to know if we can do it so that we can start raising money to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Cairns, are you saying that you would expand the sports offerings or the athletic opportunities for the student body in general? To include more kids if we have additional artificial surfaces? Is that what you're getting at?
Yes, we'd have more opportunities due to less cancellations, more chances to get kids out on the practice fields. And we would truly, right now, we have one turf field that we have to utilize that one resource for multiple teams. In the fall, we're using it for both boys and girls soccer when we can, we're using it for field hockey, we're using it for football. But we could get more teams on the field. And we can also get our PE kids out there and working on it. And from a community standpoint, we, we are a good neighbor to our community members. So when our teams aren't on the fields, we're also letting the WRAs of the world. we're also letting the WRAs of the world and Lower Gwinnett and Ambler Sports, we're letting them use it as well.
I could jump in to clarify there. It actually, just to be clear, it would not expand the number of offerings. It would maximize amount of time our existing offerings are actually able to let students be active.
That was my understanding.
And it would minimize the number of times kids have to practice in a parking lot or in a gym when really it should be outside.
Is this for more than one field? It's not clear if we're considering multiple fields or just one?
Well, what we were looking at to get the feasibility study on is the, on two different things. One would be the, where the baseball and softball fields are right now. And then the other one would be, I think it's field one?
One behind the stadium.
One behind the stadium. That one would be able to have, you'd be able to probably have lacrosse, soccer, and maybe field hockey, maybe some football practicing. The other one, you'd actually be able to play baseball games, softball games, as well as lacrosse, soccer, and field hockey. So the one would be a larger turf area. The other one would be a smaller one, but we'd need to be able to those.
Is it either or, or you're considering both?
Well, in a great world where we would have lots of money, we would do both. But this would be an either or just because of money-wise. If we could raise enough money to do both, we would absolutely love to do that. The kids would love, they they would all be able to be out there at the same time. But money, financially, it's not really feasible right now, both.
Would the study also include the feasibility of possibly having a well-graded natural surface instead of artificial surface? I know some people are concerned that artificial turf leads to more injuries. I don't know if that's well-founded or not, but it is a concern.
Might be a concern. I think the old turf fields of the olden days where they were, a lot of them were on top of concrete, basically rugs on top of concrete that were causing a lot of injuries. The turf fields that they have nowadays are so much better that I don't know that the injury thing is higher for turf, but I don't think that we were looking to do some feasibility for leveling, grading, and what we already have.
I can add to that. One of the problems is that when the studies take place that's on a professional level where you can have a perfectly groomed grass field that's used once a week and the rest of the time is tended nicely versus an artificial turf field. And we do not have the former. We don't have a ways to keep people off it when it's too wet. One day's worth of lacrosse practice on that thing, cutting and digging into it ruins it for the rest of the season, frankly. That's what we're up against. And this is not Wissahicken specific. This is all public entities who by design have the fields open as much use as possible. Even if we were able to better drain them, because as we all know, the fields out there are very poorly drained. It's part of the climate of the neighborhood. But even if we were to design a perfect drainage system, at one time, when the field, the grass is too wet and gets made divots in it, then injuries actually go up, maybe different kinds of injuries.
Joel, as an actual student, do you have a perspective on athletic fields or the prospect of having more athletic turf fields?
So like the, like the main sport I play, I play baseball. So the past two years, we've had like big snowstorms in March and we've the first year we were inside the gym for like two weeks and we didn't really have the proper infrastructure in there to like get any work done. The past, like last year, it was like three weeks we were inside because the fields just weren't draining. We couldn't, you know, play outside. We were in the parking lot. And to go back to the topic about the turf, like I hear all the time, I don't play a fall sport, but all the fall sport kids are like very like upset about having to share the turf like they never get, like sometimes they can't even play their main games on the turf. They'll have to play like back and on one of the grass fields just because there's nowhere for them to like play. So I think one or two, like whatever the budget allows, obviously, but one or two more turf fields would be really good just for, you know, getting the kids out there to play.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the obsolete equipment would be the last thing on the list. Up for vote next.
Okay. Well, before we jump into finance stuff, Joel, you want to take off and move on to the rest of your evening? We appreciate your input this evening. All right, David. All right. Finance Committee, David, please.
Thank you. The first item is an informational item of the report of the Audit Committee, and I'm going to ask our representative of the Audit, Matt David, to do a summary.
I can't remember the specific day, but it was about a week or two ago. And we had a report of a, from our independent auditor at Oaks, from Oaks, Pennsylvania, and they prepared a draft report for us to review, which we went through in some detail. And as you expect, the report was very complimentary of financial iteration of the district. There were no red flags that were raised. They went through for us the specifics of how they formed their audit. They said it was a standard audit. They talked with us a little bit about how they have new people coming in, so they're not always the same people who see the financial reports for the district. But and given all of that, they still said that the district is extremely well-managed and we should be very impressed and proud of our financial administrators. To the extent there were some things that are difficult, for example, the the financial obligations of the district with respect to piecers, those are items that district can't independently affect. And so there was some discussion about that. But overall, the report was that we stand out among our competitors as being very well-managed. And I would leave it up to our superintendent or Mr. Coleman to add whatever they'd like to add to that report.
Well, I'll say a few words because Wade won't because he's too modest, but frankly, the fact that there are no findings and and the fact that what Ms. David said is that we consistently get high marks, credit to Wade's oversight and also the district's entire financial management team. So congratulations and really well done.
And I will pass along your kind words to the staff. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Well, moving on, we have, next week, we'll be voting on items, five different items. The first one would be that to accept the audit report. The second item would be budget transfers for 2017, 2018 school year based on the final audit adjustments. And Wade, I presume that is to make sure none of our accounts are in the red?
Correct.
Third item would be a commitment of fund balance for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year per document I three. Fourth item is approval of financial reports per document I four. And finally, approval of list of payments issued for the month ending October 2018 for document I five. That's all for the finance.
I have a question. Wade, can you explain a little bit of the budget transfers?
Sure. So we request permission from the board to make these transfers. We usually do that in a May timeframe. And then after the audit is complete, we transfer money, exactly as Mr. Frank noted, to essentially move money from one section to another. It could be as simple as moving money that was originally budgeted as a supply to an equipment item and those types of things.
Okay, moving on to the Policy Committee. Carol?
Thank you. The Policy Committee met a couple of weeks ago, November the 12th. Our next policy meeting is December the 10th here at 5:30, and that is a Monday night. The policies on tonight's agenda for the second reading were discussed at the October 29th Public Work Session. No changes have been made since the first readings were approved at the November 5th Public Board Meeting. The one policy on tonight's agenda for first reading discussion is Policy 803, which is the school calendar. It was discussed at the Policy Committee meeting on November the 12th. At that meeting, a draft, two drafts actually, of the school calendars were examined. One was starting before Labor Day and one was starting after Labor Day. And of course, the one starting before Labor Day, the finishing in June would be a week earlier than the one when we would start after Labor Day. Dr. Chris Field shared the reasons for his strong recommendation to have schools start before Labor Day every year. Committee consensus was to move forward with revising the policy to remove the requirement for school to start before Labor Day, which is reflected in tonight's first reading. And that's my agenda, my policy.
So Carol, just to be clear, although we're removing the specific language that's in the policy that says we have to start before Labor Day, that doesn't mean that won't or
That's correct.
Flexibility one way or the other.
That's correct. We most likely will start before Labor Day.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions? Moving on then to the report of the Personnel Director. Kathy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Antonio. There, I have no informational items and my items are under Personnel K1. The spreadsheet items will be requesting approval. In addition, we'll be requesting approval for additions to the school volunteer list. Number three, approval of an agreement between the School Operations Services Group, which is SOS in the Wissahicken School District. We use this company to provide our contracted services for van drivers. Number four is approval of a conference request per document K4. Number five is the approval of Resolution W-10-18, which is Wade Coleman's employment agreement for document K5. And approval, number six, approval of a new administrative job description for school safety and security coordinator for document K6. And lastly, a release and settlement agreement for an employee of the Wissahicken School District will also be included.
Kathy, I have a question about that school safety and security coordinator.
Yes.
Is that related to the state's Safe to Say Something program?
It's related to Pennsylvania Department of Education requirement that we appoint a school and safety coordinator, which Dr. Chris Field did recently by appointing Jason Byalka. And this is just a small stipend for all the additional work that has been included. And there was a job description also included for your review of those duties that are required.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is that when I was at the IU meeting recently, in the legislative update, they talked about the Pennsylvania Department of Ed's partnership with Sandy Hook Promise.
Yes.
It's like Safe to Say Something, like phone hotline that they're implementing statewide. And they said that every district is required to have some contact hotline. So is that role part of that?
Not necessarily. It falls under his umbrella of of security duties, but we'll have, when the hotline is up and running, we'll have four contacts, I believe, here. He'll be one, but and so the hotline is not ready.
Right.
I guess to January, maybe.
January.
Nope, but he will be one of our contacts.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, moving on to Report of Board Representatives. Extracurricular, Tracy?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Next is the Montgomery County Intermediate Board of Directors. That's, last, the MCIU had their monthly Board of Directors meeting, basically routine stuff, bringing up budgets and personnel actions and so forth. One interesting thing that came up, though, was legislative report. And I don't know if Pat or, well, Pat covered this in her report, but sorry to steal your thunder if they do. One of the things that they mentioned that I thought was interesting was that recently, the Pennsylvania Senate passed a resolution that will lead to the Creation Advisory Committee that's going to investigate the benefits, the challenges, options for implementing later school start times, high schools across the state. I know this is a topic that Tiffany, previously on our board, very interested in. I thought it was noteworthy to see that at the state level, they're looking to examine statewide, potentially statewide action. Because in my view, it would be difficult for any single district to implement later school start times on their own, just their connectedness with athletic programs and so forth. But if at state level, they mandated that we're going to start, then I think it'd be much more easier for everyone to follow in line. And curious to see how that unfolds. That's it for the MCIU Board of Directors. MCIU Legislative Committee, Pat?
You did kind of steal my thunder.
Sorry.
At the last meeting that both Ron and I attended, that was the item that was of great interest. And there were representatives from the Pennsylvania School Board Association who were very enthusiastic and very excited about the prospect of studying this in great detail. There was a lot of discussion about how to coordinate schedules among districts. There was a lot of positive energy in two respects. One was that they felt that the science regarding having the benefit of later start times there. And secondly, that there are, at least in Pennsylvania, some districts that have been able to successfully coordinate their athletic schedules and all of that and still have later start times. So it seems like it's an idea that all the energy is around it and that there are going to be reports. And I think as a matter of fact, there was a request for almost a time, a deadline, I don't remember specifically, for a report to be made regarding the idea of a later start time for the high schools. And that was the very exciting part of that meeting.
All right.
That's my report.
Great. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ronnie?
We have no report. We haven't get there.
All right. We discussed the board voting items. So now we're moving on to the second public comment section on any school-related topic. You'll see no speakers registered. So I'll move on to board comments, comments from fellow board members. Nope, okay. And can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.